A meeting for the Shenandoah City Council Wednesday, October 14th, 7:00 PM. I call the roll and notice that everybody is here. We're going to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, and then if you would like to stay standing with us, I'll say a quick invocation for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the honor of Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Dear Lord, we come before you, and tonight, we just, we thank you as always. It's been a, it's been a tough year, but we've had to, we've had to think about what's important in our lives and reprioritize, and obviously, that starts with our family, our friends, our neighbors, our community, and most importantly, you. Lots gone on this year with, with obviously, a pandemic, and we feel for all of those who have lost someone or been impacted by that. As Councilman Ron Raymaker reminded me today, we've had multiple hurricanes that our neighbors in Texas and Louisiana have had to deal with, and here recently, locally, we've, we've lost some pretty important people. Lost Mayor Toby Powell, we lost former Mayor Mickey Dyson of both of the city of Conroe, and we lost, just recently, Ms. Trish Knight, who is former Mayor Bob Knight's wife in the city of Shenandoah. And we know that, you know all things, and you, you have all things planned out, and through these events, we can come closer to each other and closer through to you. And so, we just, we want to take a moment and, and tell all of our, our neighbors and our family and our friends and our community, that our thoughts and our prayers are with them, that we love them, and we just want to tell you that we understand that we're not going to be perfect, and, and we're not going to make perfect decisions, but we're going to try to do the best job we can to do the right things for our family and our friends and our community. We pray all these things in your son's names and all God people said.
Amen.
Okay, well, we're going to start off with our Citizens Forum, which is item five. And thank you for being here tonight, everybody. It's always nice when we have a crowd. And I did have one citizen sign up to speak. Citizens are invited to speak for three minutes on matters relating to city government that are related to either an agenda or non-agenda item. Just keep in mind that we can't deliberate with you, but we do hear you and we appreciate your comments. We do ask you to come up to the podium, just say your name for the folks on YouTube, and speak into the microphone. And so, my one person that signed up for the first Council, Citizens Forum, rather, is Dr. Jim Wallace. Jim, come on up.
My name is Jim Wallace, and I live at 216 Silverwood Ranch Drive, and I want to thank all of you all for letting me be here today and to speak for just a moment with you. As you are well aware, because of the email communications over the last few days, my inquiry is about, I had asked some questions about the Energi outage, which occurred on Sunday night, Monday morning, for about six hours, and also about the Wellman Road project. I want to thank Kathy for her work in digging up some answers to questions that I ask, and for several of you that contacted me either by email or phone and gave me your perspectives on it. I appreciate that very much. I want to answer a couple, a question, and then raise a question. The question I want to answer is, why do I keep coming before council about this project? It's the third or fourth time you've seen me on this project, you know I care about it, and I'm interested in it. Because often, when these issues come up with Energi, people say, "Well, just contact Energi. Just, just, they have a line, just contact them, call them." Well, I've done that. But I'm one person, and it's easy to ignore one call and one person. You represent several thousand people. And so, when you call, or Kathy calls on your behalf, it carries a little more weight, and Energi gets the message, these are matters we're concerned about. And so, that's why I keep coming for you, to let you know that it's not gone, it's not forgotten, and as our representatives, I count on you to represent us on these kinds of issues with companies like Energi. The second thing I want to bring up is another project, is another project. I appreciate that Wellman Roads can be done. I appreciate the money that the city's putting in for that, that Energi's putting in for that. But there's something that's left undone, and that is, all the people in the valley who still have overhead lines. And I would like to see that project taken up. Now, I've been told how much it would cost by different members of council, but I want to suggest something to you. The Wellman Road project was paid for by everybody, not just the people who live along Wellman Road. Everybody put their tax money in, and it helped pay for that. I think it's equally incumbent upon us who are on Wellman Road, who've benefited from the completion of that project, to help the people who live in the valley to complete that project. Now, would that mean a raise in taxes, or a bond, or some other kind of financial effort, probably? But you know what? It's for the benefit of all of us, because it will help in the people and the property values of the people who live in the valley, and if it helps them, it helps me. And this is not just about me, it's about we. It's about the city of Shenandoah. Recently, we had a raise in the water rate, and there's discussion about that. Couple of people came before council, a lot of people sort of spouted off on, on Facebook about it, you know? I didn't come, because I didn't mind my rates being raised as, really frankly, a small amount as they were, to assure good water service for everybody. I think we all need that. I want you to know, I don't think a lot of people will mind if we have to raise some rates to get the project done of burying all the lines in the valley from Energi. And I propose that as something you might discuss, and I also want to let you know that I'm willing to volunteer to be a part of a citizens committee to look at that, if you all ever decide to take it up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, well, if you didn't get a chance to speak during Citizens Forum, as you probably well know by now, we do have a second Citizens Forum, so at the end of the meeting, so feel free to sign up for that. And that will move us into item six, which is council inquiry. Does anybody have anything that they would like to bring up right now?
Yeah, I do.
Councilman Raymaker?
As you know, the backbone of Louisiana's power grid suffered catastrophic damage during the recent hurricanes, and as you know, it caused rolling blackouts in this area as well. The hurricanes ripped away power lines, and nearly 1 million people were left in the dark for days, and even as of this morning, 47,000 are still without power. Energi said that the damage to its high voltage transmission lines and other key infrastructure is some of the most severe damage that they've ever seen, and they cited customers would be without energy for weeks. The customers can't get the power until the critical system is back up and restored with the high, high transmission lines. So, Energi's damage assessment included 219 transmission lines down, 1,100 miles of line, and 292 substations damaged, 1,000 massive transmission towers damaged or destroyed, 10,000 of the company's poles down, 3,700 transformers, and 1,900 spans of wires down. Just one of the 500 kilovolt transmission lines in southwest Louisiana had 72 structures damaged beyond repair. Just one of those structures takes 318-wheelers' worth of materials, 1,300 man-hours to replace, effectively 72 construction projects in emergency circumstances, no less. Each project takes roughly 80 people, involves cranes and helicopters to lift equipment. In some cases, those towers are in remote locations, representing logistical challenges such as forcing workers to get to the site by airboat. Each of those lines must be rebuilt and each component inspected before the line can go back online. There's 29,000 workers from 29 states deployed in that region, and 8,300 Energi employees working on that. It's also estimated that it could take up to six weeks to get water and wastewater systems back online fully. Water and wastewater industries don't bring SWAT teams of workers to the states like the utilities can, and they have to wait until electricity is restored, in some cases, to determine what's been damaged in order to make the repairs. So, while our project has been delayed due to COVID-related supply chain issues and hurricane-related resource constraints, I think we can give Energi an allowance for what amounts to a minor delay in our project timeline, considering I've lived here since 2011 through this all. Our recent outage, while an inconvenience to be sure, is dwarfed by the ongoing impact of our neighbors in Louisiana, who have to suffer with the most base, without the most basic necessities of electricity, sewer, and water. Staff and council have a great relationship with Energi now, though we've had to forge that relationship to even get on their radar during my time on council, as there are many voices and squeaky wheels vying for Energi's attention. But this council has managed to rise above other regional municipalities and make the Wellman Loop a reality, and with it, electrical redundancy for the entire community, and it's just a few weeks away. That's all.
Thank you, Councilman Raymaker. Anybody else?
I would simply add to that, this, the project that we're doing doesn't cure power outages. There are a lot of contributors that have an effect on whether or not our city has power. While it will help keep power on more effectively than it has in the past, it is not a guarantee that power will not go out in our city. Obviously, there's a lot of things that are way beyond our control in this situation especially, but even once the project is completed, it's not a cure-all.
Well, I would agree with you, Councilman Fletcher, and one of the things that I was going to talk about tonight, based on all the chatter that I saw on Facebook when it, when the power outage happened, you know, when I, when I first got on council in, in May of 2016, I was welcomed with the second flood, right after the tax day floods, which was kind of the Memorial Day floods, I guess you'd call it. And it doesn't get as much, much publicity, because it didn't have as, as much of a ring to it for the name, there's no tax day associated with it, but I believe it was, if I'm not mistaken, it was May 27th, it was the day after, it was Thursday, it was the day after I was sworn in, and we lost power, and that set up a string, I, let me rephrase that, I did not lose power at my house. Where I have at my house, I have underground power that is underground back to a substation, and I very rarely lose power, if we're going to be honest. I live on a, on a neighborhood on Grogan's Mill, and so, we lost, as a city, though, we lost power several times and months thereafter, and Councilman Cloud, remember, and so can Councilman Raymaker, because they were both on council with me at that time. And so, I very quickly brought up the fact that we were going to continue to lose power until we got rid of overhead power lines in the city. And, you know, those power lines that are, that are out in our neighborhoods right now that are overhead have been there for, you know, 50 years or so. And I brought up the point then, and I'll bring it up again now, is, are they going to be there another 50 years from now? Are we really going to allow our kids to look up in one day, see those power lines, and say, "Wow, why hasn't anybody done anything about that? Why are they still there?" So, I'm going to bring back up the fact that in January of 2017, that council at that time passed an ordinance that said the city of Shenandoah could not spend money on converting overhead power lines to underground, and that was their way to try to kill the project that we wanted to see happen, which was to bury those overhead power lines in, primarily in the valley of Shenandoah, but as much of the city as we could reasonably, and especially the residential areas. So, you know, don't be surprised if that comes back up again, because once again, for as much as we try to do, and as much as we try to get Energi to do, as Councilman Fletcher so aptly pointed out, until those power lines are taken care of, we will never be free of the possibility of losing power in the city, because something can knock a power line down when it's running through trees in somebody's backyard, or front yard for that matter. I don't want to bring up old councils versus new councils, but, you know, that was their charge, was they were, they were going to make sure that we didn't spend the money to, to bury that power line, but that council's gone, and if we want to do something about this, we have the ability, right now, while we are in office, to set in motion something that will change Shenandoah for generations. Now, I don't know why y'all are here, but that's why I'm here. So, when you look at the important stuff, the really important stuff, what can we do to affect quality of life in our city? That's a big one for me, and I really think it's one that we need to bring back up again. So, we probably beat this dead horse, but does somebody else have anything on that?
No, I just wanted to add that we did have a committee that looked into that.
We did have a committee, that's right.
And the expense was, back like in 2016, 17, was like $8 million. You know, subsequent to that, now, we've got about $31 million in projects coming online in the next 10 years, so we have to factor that in as well.
It's expensive, it was going to be laborious, because we were going to have to get, we were going to have to get easements from property owners, and, you know.
And a referendum.
And there was, there were going to be, but, but y'all have heard me say it before, just because it's hard doesn't mean you don't do it. That, that's when it's time to dig your heels in and work harder. So, I'll leave it at that. All right. Anyway, anybody got?
Counselor, if I could add something that might be helpful. In the process of working through this Wellman project, I did speak to Energi about that, and at the time that we had the original information, getting permission from a property owner, or the cost and everything, the extent of the project, they did tell me that there might be other options now that we could look at. So, I'm going to, I'm going to follow up on that and see what we, since that time, they've had some personnel changes and plenty of other incidents, but I'll revisit that conversation.
That would be great. Thank you. Okay, well, if nobody's got anything else, then we will move on to item seven, which is a presentation of a MAD award to Officer Ledesma. I believe that Chief is going to take this one.
Actually, Lieutenant Reivers is going to take this one. Ledesma is also receiving their commendation for.
Oh, we got a twofer. Nice.
Outstanding.
All right, so, my chief said, "I'll get on with the first half of this and just give you a quick background of what this is," but Mothers Against Drunk Driving is a prominent organization that has a big footprint in our part of Texas, especially because of the amount of intoxicated driving crashes, fatalities, injury crashes, and everything else that are related to that offense. And so, every year, they put on a recognition ceremony of some kind in, in Montgomery County, and they recognize officers who do exceptional work to work on that effort. And so, before I get to the, the details of that, I just want to tell you a little bit about, about Officer Ledesma, just a little background on him. He was born in California, which he wants you to know was not his fault, but he was raised in central Texas. He moved to Huntsville to attend Sam Houston State, where he'll be graduating in December with his bachelor's degree in criminal justice. He started his career with San Jacinto County Sheriff's Office, where he elevated to the lead investigator of crimes against women and children, and he started with our police department in January of 2018. Well, in Huntsville, he met his wife Miranda in prison. It's not what you think. They were both correctional officers with TDCJ, so that's where they met. They added one of their, they added one to their family in April of 2018 with their adorable daughter, Malia, who you all have seen and heard at this point. She's very happy to be here. Jeremiah found a passion for driving while intoxicated enforcement during his time on patrol here, and personally, he views every DWI arrest as a, as a potential lifesaving action, whether it's saving that driver's life from themselves, or saving the lives of innocent motorists from the driver. And so, like I said, MAD's annual recognition was canceled due to COVID, and so, we're recognizing him on their behalf. He had the most DWI arrests for our department in 2019, and our agency places a high priority on that enforcement, along with Montgomery County, the DA's office, pretty much everybody around here is in lockstep with that, with that effort. And so, with that being said, they presented a certificate for him, and so, we will be presenting that for law enforcement appreciation to Officer Jeremiah Ledesma.
So, this is for an incident that happened at Sam's Club. I'm going to read this letter here. This is his letter of commendation. On September 19th of 2020, approximately 15, 30 hours, that's 3:30 for Laman people. Officer Jeremiah Ledesma was working an extra job at Sam's Club in Shenandoah. Ledesma was flagged down by a citizen and informed that a man had collapsed in the parking lot. Ledesma ran to the aid of the collapsed individual and called for EMS, and while waiting for EMS, Officer Ledesma performed CPR with the assistance of a retired HPD officer. After some time, EMS arrived and took control of the scene. EMS informed officers that the male subject had a pulse, and he was transported to the hospital. If it was not for the quick actions of Officer Ledesma and his persistence to continue to give chest compressions, it's reasonable to believe that the male would have died on the scene. So, this letter will serve as a commendation for the actions taken on September 19th. Your actions during this stressful situation is a testament to your character and compassion for the people in which you served. With respectful gratitude, Chief of Police.
Officer Ledesma, thank you for representing the city as well as you do. We, you know, we're lucky to have you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ron, I'm afraid that the MDD report might drop a couple more dry. I mean, that one's got to be up there somewhere. But we're back to one of my favorites, which is the introduction of a new employee.
So, Tabby Pagoda, stand up, Tabby. So, this is Tabby Pagoda, and she goes by the name of Tabby, and we, her name's Tabitha, but we call her Tabby. So, her background is in water and energy conservation. Her family lives in New Everly, and she's been married for 13 years to a fireman, we're not going to hold that against her. And she has two boys, ages two and eight, and we met them the other day, very sweet boys, and she likes to be outside, she says that a lot. So, she's been awesome. If y'all haven't got to meet her yet, we, we just love her personality, and she's been great.
We haven't got a chance to meet her yet, but welcome to the city of Shenandoah, Tabby.
Welcome aboard.
Happy to have you.
Welcome, Tabby.
That's awesome. Okay, let's move on to item nine, which is a presentation from Lone Star College.
I have a couple of handouts you might be able to use here, or pass them out there?
You can pass them out, if it helps with the presentation, sure.
Yeah, sure. We'll see how, how much I stick to this.
Thank you.
Don't worry about it. Thanks so much.
Kyle, can I get a couple more? The gentleman over there, and then one here. Thank you.
Back and bring some more up there, man. Sure, thanks for the one. Miguel Lopez, our director of SBDC. So, the officer left his notes up here, there were some good jokes I made. So, thanks for having me this evening. Kyle Scott, Vice Chancellor of Strategic Priorities with Lone Star College. I do have to start off by saying that I have a particular affinity for local government. As a former political science professor, I spent a lot of my time trying to convince students that local government was the most effective government. It's the government that affected your life most directly, therefore, you should care about it the most. I like to think that those students who were awake were convinced by my arguments. But my affinity for small government, I think, is probably what's motivated me to join Lone Star College, in the sense that we affect lives directly, and we affect the community around us directly. We have a $3 billion economic impact in the greater Houston area, but most, more important than that, we affect the lives of 93,000-plus students every semester. And our biggest challenge going in to this year was keeping those numbers up. So, in the event of COVID, we were all worried about what would happen to our numbers, and I'm happy to report here this evening that we are down in the student headcount by .1%. We compare that to HCC, that's down 9%, and a state average for community colleges that's down 10%. And we've done all this by keeping our employees and our students safe. To date, since March, we have had 291 reported cases. None of those cases are the result of community spread. We have also done this by maintaining affordable tuition and affordable tax rates for everybody in our community. Just two weeks ago, our Board of Trustees reaffirmed a tax rate of just over a dime for every $100 in valuation, which is, the fifth year in a row, your tax rate has remained unchanged. Compare that to the state average, and we are two, we're, I'm sorry, we're a third lower than the state average at 15 cents. So, we're doing all this in a cost-effective way, while still aggressively recruiting students to make sure that we extend the transformational impact of education to as many students as we can. Now, how are we dealing with COVID, and how are we keeping our cases low? The most important are what we call our return-to-building protocols, or our RTB protocols. So, we have not returned all of our employees, just as we have not returned all of our students. Our students are returned to on-campus learning at a rate of about 25%, that's primarily workforce, 50% are online, and 25% are receiving their courses in a hybrid fashion. So, there's a lot of spacing and a lot of gaps between the student rotation, which also means, if you're not a student-facing employee, chances are you're going to have a regular work-from-home schedule. You may need to come in one or two days a week, but for the most part, you're working from home unless you're in a student-facing service, financial aid, registrar, instructor, that sort of thing. But for those instructors and employees who are returning to campus, they first have to fill out an online form to verify that they have no symptoms, have been exposed to nobody with symptoms, those sorts of standard questions that we've now all become accustomed to. Once they arrive to work, they're provided with PPE if they don't have it already, they're also subjected to a temperature scan, so that if they're above a particular temperature, they go home. Also, we've had no community spread, and the result of this is, if somebody reports that they've been exposed to COVID, whether it's at work or not, everybody that they came into contact with that day is quarantined for 14 days and can't come into work until they've been cleared by our OGAC, so the Office of General Counsel. So, that way, we maintain relevant contact tracing to make sure that we're preventing community spread, and anybody who may have been exposed does not come in. And we've also maintained controlled access to all of our campuses, in the sense that unless you have business there, you're not coming there. We've limited some visitors from time to time, and we have controlled egress and regress, so that only certain buildings are open, and only certain entrances and exits to those buildings are open. Now, the biggest challenge that we've all faced, aside from just making sure our students are aware of us, is bridging the digital divide. And one of the things that we've done, so we maintain an equity in our education delivery, and that we don't force students into an unsafe environment, or into an environment that they are uncomfortable learning in, because they don't have access to a computer. So, we've been able to make 6,000 laptops available to all students. So, if you're registered for six hours of college credit, regardless of any other factors, you get a computer. We've been able to give these away, and it's led to what we consider to be a higher-than-average retention rate, as well as a higher-than-average success rate. So, I'll conclude you with the success of our students. Thank you for having me this evening, I'll take any questions if you have any.
Did somebody donate those laptops that we should be giving some credit to, or was that at the expense of the school?
So, some of these were, and some of these weren't. The donor, we can thank anonymously. We have a donor who likes to remain anonymous. This was a similar donor who we had to cancel our gala, and he said, "Well, let me make up the difference and just..." Right? So, some of these people like to... So some of these people like to... But the other has been the result of CARES funds. So we receive, we're the recipient of $28 million in CARES funds. 14 million of that can go to cover operational deficits that are associated with COVID. The other 14 are directed at student assistance. But we've taken all 28 and dedicated it direct... If it can be tied to student assistance, that's how it went, and that's where these laptops came from.
That's great.
Yes, sir.
That's great. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Okay, we'll move on to item 10, which is the presentation of the annual pool report. And I noticed we have Ms. Woody here. I bet we get to hear from her.
I am here. Wait, my crops. Yes. Our lifeguards do not like old-fashioned school. This is our counter for everybody when we had to stay under 25%, which meant under 50 people. So they had to speed them in and beat them out. And the day that Kathy told me that we had gotten to 50% capacity, you know, good thing nobody was in the room because the lifeguard picked it up and threw it on the top shelf to hide it. Way above me because it's about seven foot tall.
Geez, Woody, I thought it was a flotation device.
Well, it's a two-by-four. I guess it could float. But they had to beat every kid a person came in, they had to slide the beads. And the smokers drove the guards crazy because they'd go in and out and in and out. But we survived.
I'll tell my kids to quit smoking.
I'm surprised Joseph was so cheap that he didn't actually buy you a counter.
The problem was, we didn't have a whole lot of time to get going, and we had to be able to fix it quick. Yeah. And so, and we, because of people going in and out, we had to figure out what we could do fast. As you are well aware, this year has been very different than, and goes for the record book. Our pool staff has been working around three-ring circus of the Volt equipment, health mandates, and an avalanche of weekend phone calls. The most common question being, how much does the pool cost today to come to attend? The Woodlands residents do not like me at all because I started getting calls about 5:01 PM Friday night and would continuously get them until 9 o'clock Sunday at night. So they wanted day passes when City Hall was no longer open. I was not polite come Sunday by 9:00. But anyhow, on a better note, I, three years ago when I was hired, I started by looking around the pool with Joseph and said, I made a list, what should have been fixed yesterday? Then my next list started out, what can be wait until next year's budget? Now I'm pleased to say that the pool is moving to a new phase. What should be updated or improved? And the pool is no longer green, just the grass. During the next few months, Suzie and I will be, Suzie will be typing and putting it into English because that's not my forte. What do you need to know to maintain this pool? Because each pool has its own personality. The lifeguards will tell you that I can smell and taste when the water isn't right, but I can't teach that. It's a sense. So we will going to make a ring binder for future directors so they can have a heads-up on how to deal with the pool. Now, if you have any questions on what's not already in this report, how may I help you tonight?
I don't have a question, just a comment. As, oh, you do a great job every year. This year has, like you said, been particularly difficult, and you pulled off, you know, being able to keep us open and keep our kids swimming, which is amazing in and of itself. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I'll echo that. Just, I'm always amazed at how well the pool's kept up, and I'm in there, and I'll see, even before it's open, I'll see you there, and on the weekends, I'll see you there, and it's like, that was fantastic. And I tell Joseph this, you know, it's a great hire, and deeply appreciate everything you do to keep our community swimming.
The electric on Monday morning was fun. However, it wasn't entirely your fault. It had a lot to do with that house fire, two, three doors away from the pool.
Yeah, I'm sure you got a front-row seat for that.
Yeah, I had to act, I made the mistake of driving that day. And I had, because if I'd been on my bike, I could have gotten to the pool through the middle. I had to go all the way around. Car didn't go past the fire trucks. Not good.
We appreciate you, Woody. We really do. You did a great job.
Thank you, Ms. Woody. Appreciate you very much.
Thank you, Woody. All right, let's move on to item 11, which is discussion and possible action regarding an equipment replacement purchase.
Do a special mute button online. Okay. So this is a request for equipment replacement for a truck for the new fire inspector that will be on the community development. Currently, there's a Malibu in the building department, I mean, a Prius. That Prius, because of the mileage and it's not as beat up as a Malibu, will be moved into the pool car lot, and then the Malibu will be traded in for this truck. Does that make sense? Okay. So Jackie actually did the bulk of this with the quote. So the only problem was that there was a little bit of a shortage with the actual funds that were contributed to the equipment placement because it was for Prius and not a truck. So the solution that me and Jackie worked up together was to just do an amendment to put some more funds into the equipment placement just to match it so we don't have to do, cut a check from three different depart, you know, two different departments essentially. So the truck will match exactly what the build-in official check looks like with the same, it'll just say fire inspector or whatever the new title is. Sorry.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion by Councilman McLeod to approve.
Second.
Have a second by Councilman Ramaker. Do we have any discussion?
So I don't want to presume or assume anything because I haven't seen an introduction of a new hire for a fire inspection, fire inspector. So how premature are we on this?
He's about to start. We had a lengthy background check process because he's, the PD is going to hold his commission. He's also a police officer. So that took a bit of time. I think I mentioned it a couple months ago or whenever that started, but he, I think he's due to start on the 16th, I want to say, or in the next...
Awesome.
19th. Okay, thanks. So he'll be with us next week.
So the net, so we've got $25,000 in the expense fund now, in the replacement fund now. So really, what is this actually going to cost the budget? The difference between those?
The general fund transfer will be about, where are we at, 27,400? So about like... I think she said she was getting an updated quote on the actual lights package too, so it'll probably go down a little bit. It was just because we had to get the agenda put on. But it was just to get the approval to spend.
It's a couple thousand dollars.
Correct. But I think she said it might come in a little bit lower when she redid it.
Okay. But the net out-of-budget is not 27,000?
Oh, no, no, no. This will be, yeah. The 25,200 will come from the actual equipment placement already funded, and then we'll do just a budget amendment to bring over the remainder balance, whatever that is going to be. I think 2,000 was a, is a, it's a quote so that we can just get the process going before the next meeting since he has started, and then it'll be below that mostly.
Okay. I just thought that was a good point out. The other question is in terms of our other pool cars. So we've got the Prius now, and we've got the little Explorer. Is that right?
Yes, correct.
So is that the, is that the, we only have two pool cars that the whole city has?
We've got the two, the police also, we've got the two non, the two white.
The detective vehicles, and then I believe there's another Malibu still with PD, isn't that right? Pool car?
PD have Malibu? I thought we got rid of that.
Yes, we still have a Malibu.
Yeah, we still have one.
C3PO, we call it.
Okay, that one. Because we got the detectives' trucks now, right?
Yeah, correct.
I was just curious whether or not we needed, given our staffing, two city pool cars in addition to multiple police pool cars, so.
The pool cars do get used.
Okay. All right. Because I know the Prius has got, you know, once you hit a certain age of the Prius, that really starts devaluing, so. Is that right, car people?
Yes.
It's past that.
So I wanted to, we already passed that?
They're 2010.
They start dropping as soon as they go over the curve.
They're 10 and 11.
Don't buy any more Priuses.
All right, all right. All right, thanks. So I just want to point those things out. We're only spending about $2,000 to get that truck.
Yeah, correct. 25,200 was already budget.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second discussion. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item 12, discussion and possible action regarding tennis court backboards.
Mayor and council, this is coming back from the last council meeting. There are some good recommendations and ideas that council had for staff, and that information has been vetted out. The first, you can see on the screen, one of the suggestions from council was rather than a potential mounting location on the north fence, but actually mount it on the west, so it's facing the multi-use field. And that would eliminate the blind spots that it could potentially create if it was on the north. So you can see here an image of what it could potentially look like on the west fence line. And what's shown there is actually four panels, so a 16-foot wide section of backboard. I think it accomplishes the goal of eliminating blind spots, and it can even get a little further away from, from the neighborhood that is on the north side to reduce the noise impact a little bit. Although I imagine it's not going to be much louder than, you know, say, a basketball on a, on a backboard. One of the second things that council wanted staff to look into was potentially finding a, a clear backboard. We called several of our main vendors. Nobody had any. We did some extensive searching on Google, and these aren't made anymore. Probably for a good reason. You know, I'm thinking again of a backboard that fogs and then starts cracking. It's probably problematic, but you can't buy a clear tennis backboard anymore that we can find. So you'll see under recommended action, this is council decision. Only recommendation that staff would make is, from the research we've done, it seems like the dense plastic backboard is probably going to be the best option from Rallymaster because they, they have a 20-year warranty. A problem that you can have with plastic backboards is they can warp. But I figure with the 20-year warranty, if it starts to warp, go against the warranty, get a new one. Also, the minimum recommended size would be three panels, which is a 12-foot wide section. And that's really for intermediate to advanced players, probably better to have four panels. For beginner players, it gives you that much more forgiveness if you're not so good at tennis. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Having additional panels on the fence like that, is the fence strong enough to handle that wind load?
I haven't done the calculations, but I've seen these on other fences that looked a lot shodderer than the fence we have, and they were just fine.
This, I was just curious if that would, you know, because of the sail effect and whatever, so.
Right. Yeah, those posts are set in concrete that we have. I don't imagine it would, it's going to take quite a bit, which may knock down the fence regardless.
So that would be, this would be the location, you wouldn't put it up against my neighbor's house so that she won't come after me with a torch and pitchfork?
Well, she could do that anyway.
No guarantees, Ron. No guarantees.
It's not happened at happy hour yet. You could consider that.
That would be the recommended location, obviously, if council wanted to have it mounted somewhere else.
Yeah, I think from the security perspective, it's better on that, on that fence.
I would agree. I'll make a motion to approve four panels of the Rallymaster and of the tennis court, yeah, backboard tennis court.
So I have a motion by Councilman McLeod. I have a second by Councilman Gristi. Is your motion at staff's, at staff's recommendation on the west fence?
Yes, on the west fence, yes.
Okay. So motion by Councilman McLeod, second by Councilman Gristi. Do we have any discussion? My only comment would be to make sure you read the warranty and look for any exclusions. Make sure that warping or whatever else may not be an exclusion of the warranty. And if they're going to do a 20-year warranty, I guarantee it's not all-encompassing. There's, there's some exclusions.
Right.
So just make sure you read that and look for them. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries 4-1. Your neighbor's coming after you.
Not me.
All right, item 13, discussion and possible action to adopt filing resolution, resolution designation of representative and alternate Houston Galveston Area Council for 2021 General Assembly.
Council, this is a process we go through every year, and we're back, back there again. As you can see in your agenda report, the current representative is Councilman Brott, and the alternate is Councilman Ramaker. And you're, you're free to nominate, renominate them, or if someone wants...
Are you willing to serve?
We'll both serve again.
I'll make a motion to nominate Charlie as the primary and Councilman Ramaker as the alternate.
I'd gladly second.
I have a motion by Councilman McLeod. I have a second by Councilman Fletcher. Do we have any discussion?
Thank you for serving.
Thank you for serving, absolutely. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item 14, discussion and possible action to adopt filing resolution, a resolution designating The Courier as the official newspaper for the city of Shenandoah, Texas.
Council, this is another annual housekeeping step that we take. Once again, The Courier is the only daily, so we, we usually stick with them for that reason.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Brott.
Reluctantly second.
I have a reluctant second by Councilman McLeod. Do we have any discussion?
Is there a representative from The Courier here?
No, there's not.
Figures.
All in favor?
Nay.
I... There are no other...
Somebody has to change their vote.
All right, yay.
Councilman Gristi?
Aye.
Yeah.
Are they not, are they not working on changing the law so that we could abide by the law digitally instead of having to go through...
So you know, for starters, motion carries 3-2, but that is a, that's probably a good conversation to have with Representative Steve Toth when I'm at his office next week.
All right. I know he won't forget about 2439.
Radar, don't let me forget that. Okay, item 15, discussion and possible action to approve the minutes of the August 26, 2020, and September 9, 2020, regular meetings.
Motion to be approved is read.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Brott. I have a second by Councilman Gristi. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item 16, our second citizens forum. Would anybody like to speak at the second citizens forum? Did not have anybody sign up. All right, we will move to our city administrator updates then.
Council, I have a couple of quick updates for you. Last week, we had a water leak over here on the I-45 feet of road, and the one in front of La Quinta. We were able to make repairs without disruption of service. And just so you know, this is one of the water lines that's up for replacement in this budget year. This is the reason why we're trying to get ahead of it. Secondly, you probably got the email about voting for the water tower of the year. Make sure you vote for Shenandoah.
I did. I did. Well, there were some really cool competitors.
We need a flag. We need a flag on ours.
We won't talk about the competitors.
That would up our votes.
And then you're going to see the Halloween parade signs going up. We got those back, so we've got some great things planned for that event, and we're looking forward to, you know, this is our first go at this, so I think it's going to be successful. I think it's going to be really fun. And then lastly, you may have noticed some of our police officers have beards, and that is because they are participating. is because they are participating in a fundraiser right now for St. Jude, and it's during the months of October and November, and they pay $25 for each month, and they get to wear their beard. So that's something that we've been doing every year too, so it's kind of fun.
Pretty cool.
And that's, that's it. That's all I have.
All right. That moves us into item 18, which is council inquiry. We'll start with Councilman Fletcher.
I'm good tonight.
Councilman Raymaker?
Pass.
Councilman Grisby?
I'm good tonight as well.
Councilman McLeod?
Just again, I want to echo Woody, it's just another fantastic season of keeping our pool open, especially under these conditions, so thank you for that.
Councilman Brott?
I'm good.
Wow, quick night. Just a couple of quick, y'all, y'all heard me talk about it in the opening prayer. Former mayor of the city of Conroe, who was also, by the way, I believe, John, you might correct me on this if I'm wrong, but I believe he was the only person who's ever been the mayor of Conroe and also the Montgomery County judge. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, there you go. So he's former mayor and Montgomery County judge, passed away. We also had Mayor Toby Powell pass away. And then, of course, right here in the city of Shenandoah, we had former mayor Bob Knight. His wife, Trish, unfortunately passed away. And I can tell you, as any council member up here can tell you, that serving as a council member or mayor or anything else in public service, you're not the only one serving. Your entire family's serving. So to, to all of those folks, we appreciate their service. You know, we miss them, we feel for their families, but, but, you know, what a great legacy to know that, especially somebody like a Mickey Dyson who did so much for his community. I mean, it's just, I think you can't recognize that enough. And as, as I was just reminded, I think he was a 25-year attorney in the, in the county of Montgomery.
He was our city attorney.
He was our city attorney.